This meeting of the Board of Education to order. I ask Mr. Ed Higgins if he will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance and the posting of colors. Please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we come before you tonight asking for your wisdom in the decisions we make here tonight. May each one of us be mindful of the challenges that many of our students face each day. May our decisions serve to make their lives and the lives of our students, teachers, and administrators better. Now we pray for all those who have suffered over this last week and ask your mercy upon each of them. This we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'll ask Mr. Richard Germack if he will let the students introduce themselves, please. Tell us your grade.
My name is Rick Germack, music teacher at Gregory, and these students are all volunteers from our fourth and fifth grade. Would you please give us your name and your grade?
My name is Horation, and I'm in the fourth grade.
My name is Amiri, and I'm in the fourth grade.
My name is Orion, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Tamaya, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Summer, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Omaja, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Anthony, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Chris, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Janet, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Aziana, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Orion, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Nazir, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Anai, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is O'Shea, and I'm in fifth grade.
Thank you very much. And of course, the principal there is Ms. Kristin Holland. And these are the students from Ashley High School? No, Laney High School, I'm sorry.
My name's Amber, and I'm a senior at Laney High School.
What's your rank?
I'm a senior Master Sergeant.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm a Cadet Lieutenant Colonel, and my name is Nicole Cook. I'm a senior at Laney.
I'm Cadet First Lieutenant Tyler Monahan, I'm Junior in Laney High School.
I'm Cadet Staff Sergeant Furtado, and I'm a senior at EA Laney High School.
And the principal from Laney is Mr. Al O'Brien. The instructor is Lieutenant Colonel Green and Master Sergeant C., and we appreciate so much their assistance tonight. Mrs. Adams, would you please call the roll?
Donald S. Hayes. Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Tammy J. Cobble.
Here.
Lisa Estes.
Here.
Derek G. Hickey.
Here.
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Got a couple things to need to move around. In addition, under Old Business, Item C, District Line Adjustment, that was left off to the agenda, we need to follow up on that from last month. We need to delete under New Business, Item E, the Marine Science Memorandum of Understanding. There's an insurance question, we got to answer on that one real quickly before we bring it back to you. Then I need to move the Budget Amendments from Consensus Item to New Business. We can't approve the Budget Items until we actually approve the budget, so just a...
Is that B?
Yes.
To move it to, I'm sorry, to New Business.
It'll be Item U under New Business. And then if you look on your agenda under, you have listed Settlement Agreement, which is Item T, that needs to be moved after the closed session. We need to discuss that in closed session before we vote on it. One final one, under Administrative Recommendations, I'd like to move Mr. McAdams until after closed session because there was a change that was sent to you guys today, and I want to give Mr. Wellmers a chance to explain what the change was on that. That's enough for one meeting.
Okay. I'd like to move that we remove Item S under New Business from the agenda.
So you've heard the changes to the agenda. Is there a motion to accept it as is? That's the changes. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda, Approval of the Minutes, and I think we can include all A, B, and C Minutes. Is there a motion to accept?
I move that we accept them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, Recognition of Achievement. That's Mr. Clowbellbaum, thank you. I guess so.
Good evening. Our first recognition is very special. Tonight, we will recognize Sarah Gubitz. Mrs. Gubitz is our AIG Supervisor for the District, and she has been selected as the 2014 North Carolina Gifted Administrator of the Year by the North Carolina Association of Gifted and Talented. She earned this title for her vision and tirelessness in moving our school district's gifted education program forward. Under Mrs. Gubitz's supervision, the district's AIG program has become an outstanding example of positive growth and high expectations through accountability. She has helped to revitalize the district's Gifted Advisory Council into a well-organized committee that works closely with the AIG staff members to meet the needs of AIG students and provide equitable AIG programming across the county. It is my honor to recognize our own Sarah Gubitz for her achievement. Sarah, please come forward. And for our National Board Certified Teachers' Recognition, I will turn it over to Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize the folks that have achieved what's considered one of the most premier, sort of, not rewards, but accomplishments in teaching, and that is National Board Certification. We have twenty-two teachers we want to recognize tonight who have achieved that. We have other teachers who have renewed. So with that, I'd like to call out your names and ask that you come forward. First is Allison Outflotter. Cheryl Jones from Snipes Academy. Erica Ancouda from Snipes Academy. Kimberly Royal from Riceboro Elementary School.
She's adorable.
Maureen Hill from Riceboro Elementary School. Carrie Booz from Carolina Beach Elementary School could not be with us today. Royanna Jackson from Carolina Beach. Katie Snyder from Hogard High School. Diane Snow from Connington Elementary School. Stacy Beeson from Connington Elementary School. Dana Wolf Stanislaw from Ashley High School. Paige Kyle Haney from Ashley High School. Amy Fallon from Sunset Park Elementary School. Christine Goff from Sunset Elementary School. Courtney Hurlbut from Sunset Park Elementary School. Crystal Kals from Sunset Park Elementary School. Erin Redman from Sunset Park. Heather Hines from Sunset Park. Hollis Leary from Sunset Park. Jennifer Amorelli from Sunset Park. Kathleen Gurran from Sunset Park. If you noticed a theme through that, running through that, Sunset Park took it on as part of what they were doing for improvement in the school, for teamwork, to build togetherness in that school, to do it together. And they've done a fantastic job, and we do want to recognize what they've done tonight. Dora Davis from Murray Middle School. That's all of the teachers who have earned it for the first time, and now let's give them a round of applause. We'd also like to recognize teachers who have renewed their, through this process, which is another way to go, another tough way to go, and they've earned it tonight. So Jennifer Brady from College Park. Celesta Bruton Woodard could not be here with us tonight. Catherine Martin. Michelle Diffie. Tori Bailey. Rhonda Hathcock-Studebaker. Kristy Helms-Humans could not be with us, we know that. Amy Hardison. Karen Horrell from Bellamy. Kim O'Brien. Staff Development Supervisor. Sherry Peacock from Blair Elementary School. Jacqueline Richardson from Sunset Park. Amanda Rouse King from Parsley Elementary School. Kimberly Rushton from New Hanover. Anne Sinclair from Hogard. Jennifer Segarick from Ashley. Mary Beth Up from Eaton. And finally Jenny Winkle. Congratulations.
Our next item on the agenda. We certainly are proud of all of our teachers and their efforts, and we know they have to get to work, so. Next item on the agenda is Call to the Audience. We have two people who have signed up for the agenda item. Our first is Carrie Hessing.
Hello, I got my spot right beside the podium. So my name is Carrie Hurstein, and I'm here to continue my support for public education by speaking to you, New Hanover County Board Members, New Hanover Teachers, and Support Staff, Central Office Staff, Parents, and Citizens for Education. I have been a supporter of public education for thirty-five-plus years as a K-12 student in North Carolina, as an undergraduate student, master's student, public school teacher, and public school parent. I plan to be a supporter of public education for at least a couple more decades, as hopefully my two-year-old son finishes college in the North Carolina Public Education System. I feel it is my responsibility to support and strengthen public education on all levels and to mobilize others around legislation that supports public schools. I would like to show my support for the schools in New Hanover County that have joined Ogden Elementary in petitioning the top twenty-five percent law. I have been encouraged to see that so many school boards have filed resolutions against the top twenty-five percent law, including Pender, Brunswick, and New Hanover County school boards. With so many school boards opposing this, it has gotten the attention of Governor McCrory. Governor Pat McCrory said he is looking at whether he would like changes to a law phasing out job protections of North Carolina schoolteachers while giving raises to the highest-rated instructors who enter multi-year contracts. Recently, McCrory said he shares the concerns of some about how the tenure-ending law is being implemented, but added, "The law's intent is good." I'm very encouraged that the governor will be meeting with legislators to reexamine this law, and I'm still very uneasy that he feels the law's intent is good. The reasons why the school boards are writing resolutions against the law is because they feel the intent is harmful. Many of us believe dividing teachers would destroy team collaborations and planning in our schools. I would also like to show my support for the New Hanover County School Board as they ask county commissioners to support a supplement increase. You can count on teachers at Ogden Elementary to support you as you work with the county commissioners on this topic. We all have a responsibility to continue to persevere in standing up for North Carolina children. In the words of Norman Vincent Peale, "It's always too soon to quit." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Johnny Henigan.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Markley, and New Hanover Educators. My name is Johnny Henigan. I reside on Washington Street in historic Sunset Park. Sunset Park seems to be well-represented here tonight. I'm the President of Sunset Park Neighborhood Association. I want to thank you for allowing me to address this issue this evening. You've received our letter, and I have a copy of it for the Secretary if you so wish. Sunset Park residents have a strong historical attachment to Sunset Park Elementary School. The original Sunset Park Elementary School, now named the Lucille Shuffler Building, still stands at 2011 Carolina Beach Road on property that once was to be the community center and clubhouse for Sunset Park Subdivision. But this evening, we wish to strongly endorse your proposal to turn Sunset Park Elementary School into a year-round academic experience. Sunset Park has evolved over the years and is now home to many young couples with school-age children. They want only the best education for their children, which we feel is embodied in year-round and magnet schools. And we feel that the leadership, staff, and faculty of Sunset Park Elementary School are prepared, willing, and able to seamlessly transition into year-round mode. We also feel that the leadership, staff, and faculty could also easily and eagerly transition into a magnet school format. We also feel that since Williston is a school to which our students transition, year-round and magnet would better prepare them for the challenges of a strong middle school. In short, we strongly endorse your proposal to transition into a year-round facility and encourage you to also explore magnet school status. Thank you for allowing us to share our views with you this evening, and thank you for believing in and supporting Sunset Park Elementary School. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I think it is appropriate for us to notify the audience that we already have passed such a resolution. I didn't want them to think we hadn't. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she said New Hanover County was the only one that didn't.
No, that we had, but we appreciate that, Mrs. Kavanaugh, because we do want the public and all our teachers to know that we certainly support them in every effort. The next item on the agenda, Administrative Personnel, Appendix A, Dr. Markley.
We have one administrative recommendation at this point, again, we'll follow up with the second one later in the meeting, and that's Dr. Julie DuKlos Greenwood to serve as the, who's currently serving as our Priority School Coach, to accept the position of Director of Instruction. Dr. Duklos, prior to being the priority coach, served as the principal of Murrayville Elementary School and Openhead Elementary School. She's done a great job working with our priority schools, and will be working under Dr. Smith in the Instruction Department. She is here tonight.
Is there a move for this approval for this acceptance, a move?
Show move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mrs. Duklos.
Mrs. Duklos, you've got somebody with you?
Oh, thank you. And I would give you, the daughter came in, and by the doors, my cousin Diane, and my sister as well, too.
Wow, wonderful. Next, item number seven, policy for first reading. It's a new policy on head lice, appendix B. While we've had procedures in our system for many, many years, we felt that perhaps we needed a policy so that parents and teachers could go online and see the procedures, and so I'm going to ask Dr. Holliday if he will explain the policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, you've done a very good job of explaining what we're doing. This policy is, while it's a new policy, simply codifies what we've been doing. We follow the North Carolina Health Department manual with our health department partners, and so it's really not a new thing that we're doing, other than simply codifying and defining in board policy exactly what we do in dealing with head lice. This policy has been through the Policy Committee for a couple of times, so it's been refined. Some definitions have been inserted into the policy, so it's got a little more detail than some policy does, but that's for a purpose, that's so that parents and community members can take a look at this policy and understand exactly what we're doing, even though we do have procedures and we will be linking procedures to this policy.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday, and because this is a proposed policy, I ask the board to look at it carefully, and any of our community members would like to give input, it's online for your opportunity. The next item on the agenda is, item C, change of school assignment, appendix E, Dr. Holliday.
Yes, ma'am. This is simply a routine, ask the board to release students to the neighboring counties where their parents are employed in those school districts, so I ask that you approve this.
Move it, we approve it.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Those opposed? And I'm sorry, I overlooked Dr. Welmers with his personnel, appendix C.
Thank you, I would request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval?
Second.
Those voting for?
Aye.
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 Those in opposition? It is approved. Under old business, policies for second reading, appendix F. We have five policies from Dr. Holliday's office, but I'm going to ask us to look at the school counseling program, eighty-two hundred. After he, and you look at the first policies on the use of tobacco and nicotine.
Would you like me to carry those all together? Madam Chair?
Sorry?
Would you like me to talk about all the policies other than that one, or do you want me to take them one by one?
No, I think we can talk about them as a group, I think, because they are for second reading, and the board has had a chance to look at them.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we have any questions from the board. So then the eighty-two hundred, Dr. Holliday, for the school counseling program.
Yes, ma'am. As you know, we've been talking about this for some time. We have talked about it with our principals and with our counselors at that level. And one of the things that we're trying to do is, we're trying to rework our high school guidance program to make it more intentional, and this is, oh, I believe, our first step in doing so. We have a group that's looking at revamping our high school counseling program. However, this particular policy, the insert that we put here is that the New Hanover County Board of Education recognizes the unique and varied needs of high school students. Therefore, counselors at this level will have a conference with each student assigned to them, a minimum of once per semester, and that's, of course, twice a year. That's an intentional meeting with the child that's under their direction, and as our high school counselors have, some of them have different grade levels, some of them have divided up by alphabet. It's whatever the school chooses to do. But each high school has counselors assigned to certain groups of students, and those students that they are assigned to, now under board policy, if you pass this, and we're recommending that you do so, that those counselors will have to have at least two contacts per year, once per semester. It's not just a contact, it's actually a conference, come into the office, sit down, and talk. And we have talked about this with our counselors, they understand what the expectation is, and they are embracing that. And so we hope that you will pass this and we'll move forward. And this, like I said, will be the first step in what we're trying to do with our high school counseling program.
Do you have any questions from the board? We have one more policy for second reading, and then we can approve them as a group. Dr. Welmers, perhaps you might want to review the resolution, even though it's for second reading?
Yes, ma'am, the resolution states that the school system and the board will suspend the application of any of its policies or procedures that are specifically impacting the five policies having to do with career status. And that would be during the extent that they conflict with Senate Bill 402, and that would be for as long as that bill remains a valid law. So what we're doing there is basically not reacting to that law in the policies at this time, so we don't have to rewrite it again in the short term.
Do you have any questions about the resolution from the board? So at this time, I ask for a motion to accept all of the policies for second reading.
So move.
Those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you, they are approved. I have to go back up to B for the budget amendment. Appendix C, Mary Hazel Small, thank you. Well, Mr. Higgins just said we needed to.
These are the budget amendments, not the budget itself.
Okay, so we need, we'll move that one as well. No problem, thank you, we all need to work together. So, under old business, item number C, appendix BB, Doc, um, Mr. Hans.
Yes, my vice chair, if you recall, at the last board meeting, we had taken a look at some redistricting areas that we needed to shift around. No students were involved in these areas, no students currently live there. You asked some questions, you asked us to come back to you with answers to those questions. This is what we looked at last time. This is a, Headwaters, uh, Anchors, not Anchors, Ben, I believe. This is the area in question, and you can see the apartment complex is here, and these are in the Bradley Creek area, and these are in the College Park area, and the district line goes here, so we had recommended to move the district line, place it, since most of them are in the Bradley Creek area, just placing the rest of them in Bradley Creek. Next one, Dawn. This is the way it would actually look, and you'd asked some specific questions, and Dawn? This is the complex as their published development, how it will look once it's fully developed. You had asked, um, you had asked what it would look like if we put it all into College Park. This is what it would look like if we put it in College Park. The line would be shifted and be drawn around the prop, and the back of the property lines in this area here, as opposed to the one that was originally recommended, which is this area right here. So you move it, you're moving a much larger area, but since no students are involved, either one would work. You also asked what would the walk zones look like? This is a, the gray lines that you can see here, this is a one-mile walk zone around College Park, and a two-mile walk zone around College Park, and this is Bradley Creek, and you can see the, the one-mile walk zone, I'm sorry, it's one mile and a mile and a half walk zone, and you can see that they intersect right here. You also asked what the distance was, if a path were generated from the school to the housing area, and this is to College Park, and it's approximately 1.25 miles from College Park to the apartment complex. And the next one shows a walk path from the development down to Bradley Creek, and that's a distance of approximately four miles. So you can place them in, you can place this apartment complex into either Bradley Creek or College Park without any effect. No students are current, no elementary students are currently involved in that apartment complex. So we'll place it wherever the board desires, into either one.
Is there any discussion, comments?
Well, I think I was the one who brought up thinking about transferring it to College Park, because as Mr. Hans points out, it's a one and a quarter mile walk zone, and it doesn't cross any main streets. So children could walk or bicycle to College Park Elementary School, whereas going to Bradley Creek, it's four miles and you're crossing Oleander and Greenville Loop, and I mean, really, you can't walk from there or bike from there to.
We would provide, bus transportation would always be provided across those major thoroughfares.
Yeah, and you, but the kids couldn't if they wanted to, is the point. And the parents couldn't either, if they wanted to, it just wouldn't be safe, and so I think College Park makes more sense.
Thank you.
That's a motion, motion for College Park.
Thank you. Those in favor of the new district lines adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? They are approved, thank you, Mr. Hans.
Thank you.
Under new business, appendix I, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, I recommend the board's approval of a renewal of our audit contract with Cherry Becker.
Move for approval?
Second.
Can we go back, we still have to do?
Yeah.
Oh, you still need to go back and do that particular B, I apologize, okay, I'm learning, okay. So let's get new business, item A, out of the way. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved, thank you, Miss Small. Now, let's go back to old business, B, budget amendment, G, Dr. Markley.
Last week we presented the budget, and I'm requesting board approval for both the operating budget, request to the county, and the capital all their requests.
Move for approval.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It is approved, thank you. New business, number B, the appendix J, supporting documentation from the Wilmington Health Association, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is our routine renewal with a very excellent partner, Wilmington Health Access for Teens at our three sites, our three high school sites, Laney, Ashley, and New Hanover. And I respectfully ask that you allow us to renew this agreement.
Move for approval.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It is approved, thank you. Item C, appendix A, A, extended calendar for Lake Forest Academy, Dr. Markley.
At the last meeting, you heard a presentation from the Lake Forest staff about the extending their calendar. I would ask that the board approve that extended calendar for Lake Forest.
Move for approval. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It is approved. Item D, Sunset Park Elementary, oh, yes, Sunset Park Elementary School Year-Round Calendar, appendix K, Dr. LaShawn Smith.
Yes, also at the last board meeting, we heard from the principal of Sunset Park, and we would ask that you approve the request to allow Sunset Park to operate on a year-round calendar for the 2015-2016 school year.
Move for approval. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It is approved, thank you, congratulations. Item F, disposal of surplus, surplus property, appendix M, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, the property list that you see is, we would like to dispose of it. It is no longer desirable for public school purposes. It needs to be disposed of properly, and request that the board approve disposal of this property.
Second. Mr. Bullard, are we to have that disclaimer before we vote?
Mr. Hans stated what the language was.
He did, I'm sorry, I was so excited to see Mr. Hayes here that I. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who disapprove? It is approved. You need another moment to log in? Okay, we're moving right along. Item G, appendix N, Riceville Beach Baptist Church lease, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, I request that the board approve our recommendation to extend the Riceville Beach lease with the two classrooms and the church.
For how long?
For one more year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It is approved. Item H, appendix O, bid for Noble Middle School, HVAC, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, request the board approve the bids for phase two of the HVAC renovations at Noble Middle School.
Move for approval?
Aye.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Okay, we're on the a, Mr. Mm-hmm.
Next item, only gen item, I, bids for Laney and New Hanover High Schools, partial roof replacement, appendix P, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Madam Chairman, request.
Is it possible for us to combine all of those bids in one motion?
You talking about down through Elm, uh, down through Elm?
Yes.
Any objection from any board members? We could do that, then if we have questions, we could.
My only objection is that they're all different.
Pardon?
Let's just keep them separate.
Okay, we'll just keep them separate then, Mr. Hans?
Yes, Madam Chairman, request that the board approve the partial roof replacements at Laney High School and New Hanover High School.
Move for approval?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, thank you. Item J, bids for Johnson Pre-K Center asbestos abatement and carpet replacement, appendix Q, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Madam Chairman, request that the board approve the asbestos abatement at Johnson and Pre-K Center.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Higgins?
Carpet replacement, is that replacing where there's carpet now, or, I mean, I don't.
Yes, probably in the, probably in the media center, we are replacing some carpet with tile, we're putting tile down as well.
Okay, that's, that's what I was interested in, because I know that there was a concern that they wanted, they really didn't want carpet anymore, so.
We're putting tile, we discussed it with them, we're putting tile in a lot of places.
Okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item K, bids for Howell Pre-K Center Kitchen HVAC, appendix R, Mr. Hans.
Yes, Madam Chairman, request the board approve the air conditioning for the last kitchen. Yes, Miss Chairman, request the board approve the air conditioning for the last kitchen without air conditioning in the system for Howe Pre-K Center.
May for approval?
Second.
You say it's the last?
It's the last kitchen without air conditioning.
Oh, good, okay. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item L, bids for the installation of panic alarms, question is, Mr. Hans?
Yes, Miss Chairman, request that the board approve the panic alarm installation at all of our schools.
Move for approval?
Second. I have a question, though.
Go ahead, Ms., East End.
Mr. Hans, the amount that's listed under the recommended amount, is that, is that due to be matched, or is that with the matching grant?
That's the amount that was bid, the match is for dollar for dollar, in other words, we one for one match from the state.
Okay, so our amount will be half of this amount?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hans, also, if you would, for those that might not be familiar with what this is, would you please explain what these are and what they will allow us to do, what each school to do?
The state, the legislature passed a, passed a law in the last session that required every school system in the state of North Carolina to install a panic alarm by the fourteen, fifteen school year. This will allow, it is a button that can be pushed, that goes directly to law enforcement and for a more immediate response to a situation in a school that requires law enforcement attention. And that's what these are. We will not divulge where in the school these will be placed.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item M, bids for Virgo Preparatory Academy lighting replacement, appendix T, Mr. Hans?
Yes, Miss Chairman, request the board approve the lighting replacement for Virgo.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item N, Brain Pop Soul Source Resolution, appendix U, Dawn Brinson.
Yes, request that the board approve the Brain Pop Soul Source Resolution.
Move for approval?
Second.
Questions?
Yes.
Mr. Higgins?
Just for, just for, just for, just for understanding of what this is.
What this is, it's a, it's a website that teachers use, both in whole group learning and individualized learning. It has little short video clips that can be used to introduce lessons, or they can do pre-assessment for extended discussions, and then resources for those just-in-time teachable moments. They also have tools for differentiation and for interest exploration. Quite a few of our schools currently use it now. This is just to purchase it for the schools who don't have it for the rest of this fiscal year. This is using the digital learning funds that we got late in the year.
And how many schools have it now? Did you say, I thought you said...
Quite a few of them have it now, I don't know if I have that information with me.
So, it's not, it's not new, totally new to them?
No, sir, it's not.
Okay. And the schools that have it now are happy with it?
Yes, we, I got a usage report before I decided to purchase it, I got a usage report from the company to kind of figure out if it was being used and how often it was being used before I went through with the purchase.
Okay, thank you.
So, to Mr. Higgins's point, not for tonight, maybe for the future, I think what I would like to know is, I have a list of all the digital resources we've purchased and for which schools, because, you know, it seems at every board meeting, we approve a couple of digital, I don't know, Brain Pop or whatever, and it's only twelve thousand dollars tonight for this, and last board meeting, I don't know what we approved, but at some point, you know, this stuff actually costs a bunch of money, and it'd be nice to, you know, the question is, is this stuff better than having extra teachers or teacher assistants in the classrooms? And, you know, we really need to look at how much we're spending on these computer programs and, you know, where we might want to shift that money to actual instructors.
I definitely will say, these programs do not replace teachers at all.
Well, I know, but...
Teachers are important. This, the reason why we're doing a lot of these digital tools now is because of the funding source that we got from the state. We received a grant, as well as dedicated funds for digital tools, and that's part of the legislature's push to move away from the typical textbooks to digital resources. So, those are the funds, and we're not allowed to hire teachers and use that as funds for that. So, that's the reason...
Well, currently, but, you know, when we look at, we looked at our budget, what we found was we, we got rid of, I can't remember, it was fifty teachers or so, and, you know, twenty or thirty teaching assistants by attrition. We didn't fire anyone, but we got rid of these instructors by attrition, and I would like to know at the local level, how much we're spending on digital learning, whether it's a good use of money, and I understand that these funds are earmarked for digital learning, but it may be a discussion to have with the state legislature, that, you know, we may want to just be able to have a little more freedom for this money, and, you know, if we decide that we'd rather employ educators as opposed to buying Brain Pop software, it might be an interesting discussion.
Okay, we'll work on getting a list together.
Do you have questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item O, TCI History Alive Soul Source Resolution, appendix V, Dawn Brinson.
Yes, request that the board approve the History Alive Soul Source Textbook Resolution.
May for approval?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item P, Earth Walk Soul Source Resolution, appendix W, Dawn Brinson.
Yes, request that the board approve the Earth Walk Soul Source Resolution. These are carts to go with laptops that are being purchased, for the classrooms, for high school classrooms that are using the Discovery textbook for the trial that we're piloting in some of the high schools. So, these are laptops that will go in those classrooms, so that they have a one-to-one situation.
May for approval? Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item Q, Pearson Soul Source Resolution, appendix X, Dawn Brinson.
Yes, request that the board approve the Pearson Math Textbook Soul Source Resolution.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is Pearson the only one that can do this? I, I'm, well, and I do have a question, too, about, it says, purchase of Algebra One, Algebra Two, and Geometry Common Core Edition textbooks, but they're not called that, so they will be aligned completely with Math One and Two, Math One, Two, and Three standards?
I'll let LaShawn respond.
I would not use the word completely, but what I am very comfortable in saying is that these textbooks were the, those resources that were most closely aligned to the standards. And we had teachers that were a part of this process in selecting and looking at resources, and this is what teachers were most comfortable with as well.
So, this is the best of the bunch?
This is the very best that we could find and afford, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item R, twenty-five percent selection process, appendix Y, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Miss Chairman, request the board approve the twenty-five percent selection process, it's been presented before.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any chances or any questions?
Wouldn't know any good.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
With reservations.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of questions. Opposed? It's approved, thank you. Item T, um...
That's the after the closed session.
That's the closed session?
No, you...
All right, item U, from page one, I think it was item D.
Page in mid, Mary Hazel.
Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. I request the board's approval of these amendments, and thank you for moving it further down on the agenda after budget approval, because it does include an appropriation of fund balance related to some capital projects.
May for approval? Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Uh...
Is that moving to item T? No. Close session.
Yeah, we need a motion now to go into closed session. Were the numbers given earlier, Mr. Bullard, as far as the statute?
The agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just...
I'm moved we go into closed session.
Second.
Okay, and it's pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dash eleven eight three.
And there'll also be subsections five and six.
Also, subsections five and six, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in closed session.